August thirteenth meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will come to order. Please call the roll.
Bruno, here.
Gillum, here.
Knight, Martin, here.
Middleton, here.
You have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
One correction. On item twelve in the title, it's just a typo. It's supposed to be wast and it's W A S T R.
Which one is that?
In item twelve. I don't have my copy of the minute. It's just a simple one. Other than that, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has amended.
Has amended.
Call the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Are there any suggested changes or additions to the agenda? And I'll call it has reads. Item number five.
Zoning amendment for parcel number two, two-three-S-oh-oh-one-oh-one-oh-oh-three along Powhatan Drive from R-one and C-three to C-four. Amerco Real Estate Agent. Public hearing.
If you will, since these three parcels are all going to be under one use, uh, the staff review will be on the combined parcels and the public hearing will be on the combined. That would be items five, six, and seven.
As noted by the planning commissioner, there are three parcels of record that are subject to zoning request chain. This is at the southwest corner of Arkansas Highway sixty-seven, one-sixty-seven at Powhatan Drive. Commissioner has requested zoning chain C-three to C-four. Note up on your screen, it's also, those three lots of record in relation to highway file as Powhatan Drive. Also noted in the record, there are three parcels, I won't go with the base names, but they're parcels ending in one-oh-oh-three, one-oh-oh-four, and one-oh-oh-five respectively. And on your screen, you have three lots, parcels, correct? Essentially, you have two land use maps that are made part of the report. Uh, one is your adopted land use map and the other is more future land use map, which is tied to your traffic, twenty forty plan, city. Total consolidated acreage for all three question would be roughly one point seven acres. Purpose intent for sixteen, section fourteen-five-seven highway commercial and open display district essentially falls in line with applicant's request. I won't read it directly from the report except to say that the C-four district also provides a location for the limited amount of merchandise, equipment, and material being offered for retail sale. Those are the type of material or transportation requirements suitable for display and storage outside the confines of this building. There are your two land use maps. One is the land use that is adopted. Land use right now is classified for script development. You have attached, fully attached, uh, land use portions essentially right along the highway across Powhatan. Correspondingly, you also have on the future land use map, a more detailed look for refining land use policy. Calls for highway, highway would be future land use, classified parcels. Here is the plat submitted, uh, essentially outlining the area in question. The applicants are going to request using this site for office, but they will need to have C-four zoning that's required for warehouse storage. And that's essentially the way this use would determine on allowable land use part in relation. Essentially, there's a cover letter in the report. But they go on to say that there's market for this, calls onsite. They tend to have a lot of outside storage for trucks, um, but they also have a lot of inside use for retail for box and things like that. Trailer, all the other things. Essentially, the land use classification that we have both adopted and on the land use map are in form with zoning classification vestments. That is all for this hearing.
Open to public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this request? You will give your name and address and sign in, please. Over.
Um, owner of this property. Um, there's been some kind of mistake made here. Um, the property that was, um, in question was my mother's act. All this property was owned by my mother, Lily Mitchell Davis. There was no links or anything against this property, but there was a property problem with her house only. None of this property had anything to do with that foreclosure. And some type of big, serious erroneous mistake, um, this property was never even a progress. This has been some of this property, this site trust. They got consideration after you say, I actually have a problem with this property. Her house is the thing on the back of this property. This property has nothing to do with what was taken place against this property, which was her home, which is way back almost to Lucy Lane. This property is not, say, a part of my family. It's been as old as this ancient era. And that's why she do.
Are you saying that something about this would affect that?
Well, it's that, um, my, my family still owns that property and I don't know why they're trying to reown it. But previously, there's a fight now, that's a, we haven't had a question with that, he said.
Now, are you talking about, you see that?
Yes, sir.
You see those lot, uh, three, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
Those are, those are yours?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, and then the one across, uh, the drive there, that forgot little R-one is that one?
Absolutely.
That's yours too?
That's my parents' home, which is even all the way to the other side. Some fingers broke fractures, highway sixty-seven, one-sixty-seven coming in when I was about eight years old. Right there where the cars are, that's funny, Free Jack Wilson was right next to there. It's been some, some serious, right now, that's, uh, more time to stay. Right, to reset.
Do you wish to make a comment?
Yes, sir. My name is actually Andrew Vittig, I'm the president of U-Haul Arkansas. We actually were wanting to re-purchase that property. Two of the properties, the first two, so, for five, actually purchased through Probeck. And, um, I'm sorry, I can't think of the street, uh, one person, freeway, was actually purchased, uh, by Russell. So this, we purchased, I mean, I, this is the first time here, I didn't think that. Actually, two or six, well, we were actually purchased.
I have a letter where this, uh, meeting occurred. It was not six months ago, it was just in June, and I can prove that.
Have you closed? Yeah. When I said the first two property, right there, purchased, I heard it sealed. Those two properties were being in trust, and we had a couple of reports and everything, if the actual permission purchase, everything else, all that was done, I can't say the exact thing. So Amerco Real Estate, I will speak to them, we can't tell that. I wrote, the regional side, this property, they all purchased the property. Therefore, we, we own the property, this property became real, we can't really hold that outright.
They did not, I've approached him also, spoken to them. Um, that property is almost directly next to, uh, U-Haul. Uh, prior to that was the sick girl who was, uh, who owned, was previously owned by Larry Count's. And, uh, I did contest, I have a letter to show that in January. I don't know, uh, who represented six months ago to you, but it's a misrepresentation, and I would ask that you please.
What did you say, is they misrepresented?
That property there, um, is still my family's property, and I'm having to fight it in court because, uh, the only thing there that, um, that was a problem came up in my mother's estate, Lily Mitchell Davis, was her house, which is way back on the back of the property near Lucy Lane, on just a half acre. This, someone has seriously misrepresented, represented this, uh, whole thing here, this property, and they're pretty much just trying to take it. And I'm fighting it in court, and, um, I just want to come here to this meeting and see if I can find any justice, if it could be delayed until, um...
When you say you're finding a course or a special, a case filed?
Um, we went to court June third on this property. It was not six months ago, and I have a letter representing it.
Say, this property though, are you talking about these lots, are you talking about?
What you have on the screen, sir, everything that you show on the screen there. And as I said before, even sixty-seven, one-sixty-seven was a part of our farm. And the only thing that came up as an issue at the time of my mother's death was a little house on the back of the property. And there's been some serious, uh, errors or misrepresentation. This property is actually not for sale. Not by our family. Everything else has been, uh, some, this serious and blatant attempt to try to take things from our family. And, uh, I did speak to one of them, Kimmy's, about it. And he seemed to listen at the time, but since that time, uh, he's done some things that I would say in error, fraudulent, so forth, and needs to be represented in court. And I thoroughly intend, excuse me, I thoroughly intend to take him there.
Have you been paying taxes on the property?
Absolutely. And there's a lawyer involved who is taking monies from this property's billboard, and at any time I didn't, he was supposed to.
This is the first time here, this, we actually approached those two properties on twice, I think. The actual McKinnon property that moved back, that was expensive.
But I'm sure you wouldn't want to be a party in fraud.
Business may have a lot of property that's listed.
Excellent.
So, I said this first time.
Fraud.
Okay.
I'm not saying you. No, they're not legal. They are not, they may appear to be legal.
I'm looking for legal counsel advice on this one.
Mm-hmm. I don't have an answer for that. I mean, do you have a case number?
They have a case where this only went to court on June third, not six months ago, as he represented it.
Do you have the case number?
I do.
Can you give it to me, let me look it up? If it would please y'all, I can actually make a phone call and have, please do that too.
So, this property here is the same property, it's owned by my family.
Okay, I'm looking at the tax record, law trade. And it shows it was sold on July the second to Amerco Real Estate. That is definitely, that's our real estate company, yes.
I have a copy of that letter here, where this name, that's why I'm, because I do, I ask you, it's a, uh, problem, it's a place here, uh... Uh, legal counsel, sir, what is your name?
Case number four?
What is your name, sir? Thank you, mister.
All right. Man, do you know who Mary Carr is?
I do.
Who's Mary Carr?
I am.
I mean, Carr, you sent a letter to the planning commissioner telling them it was okay to proceed with the application, selling of this property?
No, I don't want to discuss Mary Carr.
Is that my case number?
I do. I do have it. And I did appear at that hearing and contested this action.
What's the, what's the case number?
The case number shows here sixty-P-R-fourteen-fifteen-five-six.
Fourteen, fifteen, five, six.
Yes, that's what I showed.
Who was the legal owner of the properties, those two lots, before it was sold?
Well, it's right here on this document, my mother, Lily Mitchell, Lily May Mitchell. And Mary B. Mitchell. And I did contest this action on June third, when we did appear in court.
Was there a ruling in that case?
A big part.
There a ruling?
No, not at this, not at this time. And I am requesting that you will just delay this rezoning meeting right now until we have heard that hearing or had that hearing. I'm sure that U-Haul would not be interested in going into any possible further litigation regarding this action.
I don't see we're having litigation for anything.
I know that you don't see it right now, but I know you would not want to subject your company to that type of action.
That's not what we're here for, we're here for rezoning.
Uh, I, I absolutely understand that. However, there's a problem, I'm here and I'm making you aware of that. And I think you should make some sound business decisions tonight.
We started negotiating, oh, I apologize, we started negotiating this property back, back in January. The end of January, I know because the CEO of the company was here, the end of January, when we found out. And one of Lily's daughters actually approached us and said she was willing to sell. We've asked her to buy those properties four or five times over the past ten years. And one of the daughters, I was not privileged to actually being the daughter, talked to her personally, approached us to sell the property. So we started negotiations. We made an agreement on price. It had to go through a court process because there was, I don't know what the details were, it was, on a separate, it was not that side of the law, we were trying to take care of. They went through all the court process, got all this proof, it was fine, and we closed.
Okay. On June the eighteenth, on June the eighteenth, there was an order authorizing sale of real property entered in Seventeenth Division Probate Court. Uh, indicating personal representatives, Mary Carr and a witness on her behalf, Fred Lewis, and other matters at the time of the death, the decedent on the following described real property, lots four and five. Do we know?
That's four and five, that's correct.
Okay, lots four and five of that subdivision, uh, that the personal representative desire to sell this property has filed a verified petition for authorization. Two of the three heirs of the decedent have filed consents and waivers. Third heir, Mary Mitchell, appeared and testified that she objects to the sale based upon the sale price. Ms. Mitchell did not present supporting evidence such as appraisal to support her objection to the purchase price. The court finds her testimony of similar sale of other property in the vicinity which sold at a higher price is not of similar kind or value to the subject property because the other property was improved with a commercial building and two operating businesses. And the subject property is unimproved and not located on a highway access road. The court finds that the evidence presented by the personal representative and a witness on her behalf, along with the verified petition and supporting documents which were received into evidence as exhibits A and B, namely, the broker's price opinion and the price and sale agreement for the property establishes that the purchase price is fair and reasonable, and it further finds that in best interest of the estate that the property be sold at private sale for a gross price of a hundred thousand dollars pursuant to exhibit B, and that such sale is properly conducted, a greater benefit may be secured for the benefit of the estate and the beneficiaries. The personal representative of the estate was appointed without bond, and no bond shall be required for proposed sale so long as all proceeds are paid to the Isle de Trust of the estate's attorney. It is therefore considered ordered to judge and decree that the petition be and same is granted, and that the personal representative be and hereby is authorized and directed to proceed with the sale of the real property described herein above at private sale, free and clear of any debt, and all debts of the estate or claims against the estate pursuant to the terms of the contract attached. We said personal representative is ordered correct to make a report of her action in the manner with the title retired by law. Signed by Mackie Pierce, and he is the Circuit Judge Seventeenth Division Circuit Court, Fallacy County.
And I did show up and contested that action that day, and that was not the reason I contested. That's what was stated in your letter.
And man, he made, he made reference that you appeared and contested, but he, he, he ruled that the sale could go forward.
Yes, sir, but I'm entitled to, uh, a hearing, and it should not have gone forth prior to that.
And there's been no, uh, notice of appeal filed, uh, which would have been on or before July the eighteenth. There's none shown here in the record, so it would appear that that order is, is final.
It would appear, but I'm here, sir. I knew that this, the only piece of property that was in adjudication of the court was her home. There is clearly no house there. This property should have never come up for that. And all of those other actions that were taken by the courts are fraudulent, and they should never occur, had occurred, and I will continue to fight them.
What we have before the commission is the legal owner of the three properties requesting a rezon, and you are not happy with the results of the original court order. I can understand that, but we have to rule on the application by the legal owner. In that case, it's, it's clear to me.
And who is that?
Who?
The legal owner, who is that?
Amerco.
Sir?
Amerco.
You said it is, okay, and your name, sir?
Robert Middleton.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? Calling the hearing closed. Gentlemen, discussion, you have questions?
Actually, I think it's a good place for them to expand into, because it meets with twenty forty, seems to go right along. Just going to cut this short and make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
And for the record, this is to recommend that the city council approve the rezon request. On all three parcels. I don't know what you had for lunch.
Don't have it again.
Item number eight.
Preliminary plat for lots four and five, San Vincent North Edition, Thomas Engineering Agent.
Okay, on your screen you'll have a visual screenshot of included in any commission reports on the one hundred block compared to how these parts of the project are. None of them say that the section. What is, the country of here, we have two lots in record, lots four and five. The applicant has come in preliminary plat which essentially shifts the lot line between these two lots, a little bit to the west. What it does is increase the split zone, but essentially the purpose for doing replat in the justment lot lines is property, we help propose lot five for a Holiday Express. But this is essentially find replat site plan, that's why you see one report, but it combined. On your screen, different graphics where I showed replat as it is, aerial photo, it's a little bit of a day here, but you can not see the express, what you see aerially, it's on the other side. However, it did actually catch out at those lot four, lot five, as you can see, those lot five, it showed was essentially a split zone lot. The majority of that lot being C two existing, but a little bit of C three. The Holiday Express would help do, doesn't require a C three, so that is essentially like after re zoning, replat and site plan. So there are several items quoted in the report, replat, the side yards, actually, except for the side property line of lots, and the side yard, twenty five feet, that is actually corrected. And then there's for subdemented regulations for one C, the date of the survey was announced at this point, I didn't advise replat, those were the two thousand six. As far as the site plan is concerned, you can see there's a Holiday Express. There was some discussions today in PRC regarding the ADA parking requirement. I've had working experience dealing with ADA rates. I have heard from the ADA access board that the parking requirements for ADA are in addition to non-inclusive. There are some cases in this area, that's whatever the state, standard parking spaces are required to include that ADA requirement is used in the parking park. My comments based on what I know, what my work experience tells me, that that needs to be in addition to non-inclusive, that's why that is important, but the report also indicates a total of the ten percent for staff. That's a pretty generous, often the people that we speak to, technically, the way that presented, how they're moving into a parking area, ten percent of all, that's pretty generous for staff. So the way that you demonstrate how many actually staff need the site, I have ten percent of the time. Some other other points here, to provide a firm cut of this more prepared to drive where butts, a lot of butts of private drive, there's just, access, it just has to have an improvement after providing, no access, and maybe a fire system to reach that portion of the site. Your report also speaks to the fact that our marshal should review how many, the access was told required. I've got an answer for that. The last point, says provide, describe legal access, so that less, how much, ultimately, opt for the, that's out, I, I just wanted to get in there, not necessarily. So that was another one. You can see there's four comments, crap, accurate. But as far as the opt, usually the project, plat, actual site plan itself, it would be a policy project.
Want to get this thing in proper order, or we actually need to talk about the preliminary plat first before we talk about the site plan. And my question is, because we are altering lots four and five, doesn't that require a replat?
This is a, well, preliminary plat, essentially replat, but we're not taking, not adding lots, not producing.
Changing a boundary line between two lots.
I'm not sure if we prefer to stand here, as your process, I would, I would not think replat, external lot line adjustment. I don't see, I mean, which, sure would see, spot line adjustment.
He threw the ball to you, Richard. Either way, I'm happy to.
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the public would think on this. It's essentially a boundary line, a lot line, as what?
I just want to make sure that we're doing this correctly.
I believe that subsequently, right now, when they face preliminary plat, apparently chose a lot line, they're not, that's, that's, whole replat.
Second part, that this is a preliminary plat that depends on a zoning revision.
That's another point of discussion. So this was, I had brought this up to staff, staff, and I have discussed this, which is why there's a note in the report that we do recommend, any, table the action on the site plans until such a time as relying this zoning is used, how the, there isn't, but it was submitted this way, having this requesting that we review the site plan, that we review the plat, current, both currently, they've created the R scan. So after my discussions with the staff, I was authorized, I think, property, bring this up. Staff doesn't recommend zoning properties required to site, required to something, not recommend anything. Action on the site.
This is exactly what happened two months ago, when we were asked to re-approve a preliminary plat that required zoning because it was split zone. We required a condition on that one, and because, because until the zoning is corrected, I don't know how they can do any construction coming out of a preliminary plat, much less a site plan.
I've seen some internal processes that it's, because rules create permitting, not necessarily. So if you see, that's a common, that's a special.
Is there anything about the site plan that affects the preliminary plat?
Nothing that's citing, that affects it, but except that there are notations of access legally, also show that that's how we, I would like to see additional, uh, stuff to outline, um, rest of the standard, and that's located, I'm sure there's people on this story. They don't show that, guys, that, that was, kind of, also show a call out here, just people who do this, rotating on the plat, that this will have, or the fire, this opened up, you, you, there are call outs, technically, preliminary plat, um, be modified a little bit, describes.
So I'm hearing three conditions. Did you wish to speak to this?
John Powellnell with Thomas Engineering Company. We submitted this, this preliminary plat and the site plan. Now, first of all, let me speak to the preliminary plat. First, the lot five does not exist now, so we cannot, it's just not a lot shift, because lot five doesn't exist, that's why it's a preliminary plat. That's why we had it, had this preliminary plat. It wasn't, it was already planted in some kind of lot, we could replat it, this, this is a new plat for five, not five, that's why.
There is a lot there.
Yeah. Right. Anyway, that's the reason it's a preliminary plat, is that lot five is not planted yet. So anyway.
There is no lot four and no lot five?
There is a lot four, but there is not a lot five yet. That's why we did preliminary plat. If they, we wouldn't have done a preliminary plat if there was a lot five, we would have just did replat, shifted five. But that's just that little thing, you know, that really shouldn't, couldn't really worry anybody, that little thing. It, we're going to replat lot four, we're going to platen lot five as, as shown, I don't think there's, I think there's, a, controversial about that, but.
Has lot four been planted previously?
Yes. Actually, that's lot three. So lot three, we're calling it lot four now, five, because there's, the, you have the health, the healthcare express, that's lot three, B, I think.
There's a A there.
A, okay, three A.
Yes.
And the what's lot four is three B, so we're replating lot three B and the four, planning the original plat to lot five. Well, that's, I, I'd be a little confusing, but that's just to straighten up the problem.
It is a flat. Forgive me for being dense, but are you saying there is no lot five?
That's correct. There is no lot five.
Are you in effect acquiring fee simple property to add to lot four? Is that how this is working out?
No, lot, lot four right now is three B. And we're going to replat that to lot four, take part of three B and add it to what's future five.
She's got both of them on there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all, they're on here.
It's a replat of three B into four, move the line and create a volume document. Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, it's just that little thing, we need to replat, reconfigure the property so that it fits, that's all.
All right.
That's why it's a preliminary plat, rather than replat.
All right.
Now, the rest of it, the site plan is really meat of the quest tonight, and the owner doesn't have any problem with any of the requirements that the city has spelled out here. The only thing that we need to ask for, because of the parking requirements, we don't have sufficient parking according to ordinances, we do need a waiver for that. We definitely have eighty seven rooms at this hotel, and we have eighty seven parking places, that's a one to one ratio there. What the city requires in addition to that would be the ten percent, which is another nine parking spaces, we need a waiver for that. Now, the ADA requirement, I've never heard interpreted that way, it might be that way, I don't know, I've never heard it that way. But whatever the case is, we want a waiver for eighty seven parking spaces.
Okay, again, this is a two-part issue. The first part is the preliminary plat, and we need to act on that first. And like I said, it sounds to me like there's three conditions, access on the north side, access on the southwest side showing on the plat, and subject to rezoning occurring.
The plat's only really got one condition. I mean, we can platen and not rezonate, you just can't move forward past that.
Yeah.
That's it. No conditions on the plat.
It only works if part of it's rezoned.
You can replat a lot and not rezonate, all right?
But this is a preliminary plat.
Yes, preliminary plat, so you can prove preliminary plat because you're not really doing anything. You've got, you've got a final plat to come for you, not rezoned.
It never gets rezoned, we just go to that final plat.
True.
Okay.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve preliminary plat for lot three and four, St. Vincent North Edition. Um, four and five, excuse me. He said three, maybe.
No conditions on access?
They can deal with, I think that's what the site plan is, they can deal with, in my opinion.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to approve.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillam?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Milton?
Aye.
Now we take up the site plan.
Again, the site plan, we're okay with all requirements on that, except the, like I said, the parking requirements, we just don't have room on the site now to, to have the extra parking, the extra nine spaces, plus the ADA if that's a request also. The, the rest of it is okay, okay with the rest of the department.
Can somebody tell me what the latitude is for either staff or the commission to grant an exception to the parking requirement?
You cannot vary ADA, ADA numbers, this is a charge, however, ADA charging is based on whatever name of lot, that can be, have to be, granted parking, terms, standards, that can vary the threshold, because the threshold is applied, you would make a difference in the provision.
Terms are important. Is this a waiver or variance?
It says here is a variance. Parking variances.
So that's a board of zoning adjustment? Action? That we can't do tonight, anyway.
One of the things that, one of the reasons we brought this up now, rather than waiting for the rezoning, which the rezoning's coming up next month, we want you, commissioners, to look at the requirements and basically see if there's any additional things that might be required, or if you're okay with this kind of stuff. I know you can't, maybe you don't want to prove it tonight or whatever, but, but we want to be able to continue our plans without maybe some changes, big changes.
If I sense as speaking to you all, this is probably something we think would be a good thing, for sure would, as long as we do this legally. And, and I would rely heavily on staff input on that.
As I said, I'm not sure, but I'll make staff, you're, I'm, but require a ten percent based on one.
Well, the other side of that is, is an interjection here. You've got eighty seven rooms, was it?
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven rooms, you have eighty seven parking. If the, good for the budget in, if they happen to sell out all eighty seven rooms, where you put the employees and where you put everybody else? The ADA's and.
You have eighty seven rooms and eighty seven parking spaces, that's about there.
Except for your.
Eighty eight.
I understand that it's fair, and you're talking what happens in, are pushing out to the, to their businesses in the neighborhood, or fill up with already packed hospital?
It would be, if it ever happened, that has to.
There you go, you got the touch.
I'd be pleased to get back with the ADA access board and make the, or, that's expanded actually speaking to somebody, watching, the decision about how they administer that parking, in addition to inclusive of, as one staff or as one speaking, to, that's where I get that information from. It doesn't mean that I have to call in to one of them, perhaps it should be somebody else, but we've set a, a policy to, how we view the inclusive of or in addition to, I believe that it changes laws. This comes up on a radio basis, on my, 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 my.
That would be good.
With my experience, I, if by them, that's just takes on, yeah.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? You're not, you're not necessarily asking for an approval?
If we give some approval tonight, certainly, tell me, we'd be very pleased with that. We don't get that, we're not getting education, we should, just kind of feel good, it's always a, a high, feel safe.
I can only speak for myself, yeah, we like the idea, you got two issues that you have to deal with, rezoning and parking.
And access. Issue to fire marshal on access on the north side. That's kind of the three things. You get those three, I like it, just answer those three questions.
Can we table this till next month?
Hey, John, do you have, I see here the forty foot ingress egress and utilities went at the northwest corner, it's indicated here on the site plan, is that for the emergency?
That.
I'm pointing north correctly.
That forty foot ingress egress easement is, I think is heritage way, yeah.
All right.
I, I think access on the north side is potentially, right, is potentially a driveway on that north side to heritage way if, have any, so.
But we can work, you can work with that to that dumpster pad.
Okay.
Bruno, was that a motion?
Yeah, I made a, I'm making a motion to table this till next month, we have all the answers.
I agree. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillam?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Milton?
Aye.
Station twenty forty, an update?
Let me get updated, staff, I do believe that the, decision twenty three, like, phase two, three.
Twentieth. One week from tonight.
Hopefully, that would be, and the decision to, 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 to.
There is some other motion underway, and economic development calling, would you care to give us an update on how this might impact the plan?
So, we have a, a vision that we've been working on over about a year and a half, so just the overall holiday life, or, or, holiday place, something that we are trying the overall quality of life for the future, quality of life and something that we are trying to create. We identified that, um, certain areas Sherwood is, that we would love to essentially think of our historic, not national historic, but just like for historic, our area, arts area, entertainment district. So currently we have been working, Steve was helping me, there's a, we talked to ABC Commission and a group that about twenty people have been working on the idea of defining this entertainment district. And this would be something that we could have a map of and a legal description to give to the ABC to allow us, if you're familiar with the entertainment district, allow us to open carry in this area that we find. I did not worry, I could be the volunteer. But just in the overall picture of the future land use and I believe, I think this would fit in line perfectly with that. Sure that was, you guys would be aware of. That's ultimately the vision we have for that area. Eventually is the, it's kind of three parts. Eventually it'd be arts, historic and entertainment. I know we've worked a little bit on the land use about an area that would be historic and that's more residential. Our commercial area doesn't really have the history of it. Um, so we kind of like to bring the entertainment on or next to it. Second part and then third part is ultimately like to, um, raise the power of that area. But that's kind of the big picture. And Steve and I have been working on the boundaries, um, about a half of it.
Essentially.
We're modeling it out.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Let me explain it.
Yeah, just tell us.
See it. Okay. So, yeah, we're looking, there's three restaurants we want to include in this district. So it would be, um, the existing gadwalls, gadwalls, um, of that area, the Sherwood line there, all the way over to the, oh, soon I'll open, um, Rocky Mountain Country Club. And then we're actually going to include Joey from the, um.
Three more soon.
I was like, what is that called? That restaurant as well because for the ABC, you can't create a new vendor that will fill out the hall. You have to have these. So these are three existing, so that's why we're in the boundary line and like to, I call it, I don't have it. To encompass all this, I've actually run it a little bigger than I think we need to switch it down back. My thinking on that was the bigger we go, it'd be easier if we needed a small section and then later. Trying to, it'd be easier to have a big section now and maybe only use a small part and then rather than later trying to make it bigger and we decided to do one. So that's kind of my thinking for the boundaries. But, um, do you remember the exact streets?
Well, it's, it's Fisher Club, we're in the space with North Hills and then goes north of the lead direction down Highway one oh seven, Love House.
Then back around.
First idea was two trucks just on the vacant lot there. Metropolitan very much plugged in and worked on it. Trying to make this reality. But I submitted that the ordinance that I've written to ABC that you can't have liquor coming out of the, uh, S. Life. From. And. That would tell her. I'll eat the most. Everybody's on board. And it, it won't be something that'll happen all the time. Unlimited dates and times. Got some high restrictions on, on how it's going to work. And it'll, it'll be something that if the council passes, I think, I will, we keep time to time just after we actually. Police. We don't have a downtown. We don't have a square.
Yeah, right. One of the common threads that has been repeatedly coming up in Vision twenty forty is that Sherwood didn't like any other city because we don't have a downtown. We don't have any focal point that radiates out. We don't have in effect an identity that anybody can relate to like a Batesville or even a Cabot. And what is being proposed here is try and compensate for that to give some sense of identity to the city other than a place to sleep, buy gas and store stuff.
And also some ideas that are very, very preliminary. We have not pushed out, but, um, Red Rain has the old TV or flying shop there and said, um, Sherwood's always fast breakers too. So we have, we want to paint that back on that building. Um, the permission to do that, we're just figuring all that out. Um, moving the apparel on the lower part of that same building. And then I love the idea and it'll, it'll not be my decision, but like calling that an icebreaker district is giving me attention to Sherwood and the fast breakers. So it's something that comes to me, just trying to do that, trying to create that quality place where people stop. We really, really think we can draw them off the interstate, off the wildland exit all like in the harness of wood with not going like this. Get on into the area. And that's the reason that we're visioning. That's how we're starting in this area of entertainment district.
And I do hope you're going to make a presentation to the Vision twenty forty group and the kind of, it was a heads up to us because sooner or later, all of this is going to come to the planning commission for public hearings and further discussion. And my sense is that if, if Vision twenty forty committee thinks this is a good idea, it ought to be incorporated in the plan because it's part of the vision. Thank you. Is there any new business? Mr. Chairman, yes, I have one item. Uh, staff has looked at and discussed with you the procedure for final plats and having those signed. And, uh, the resolution we have to that now is to bring a final plat to you at the moment it is available. In other words, once a final plat gets to us, we've already looked at it as a preliminary plat and we've already worked through that. So we're just to the point of verifying that everything's been received and it's correct and we are ready, uh, for the signature of the chair or vice chair. We have one here tonight, uh, in front of us and that's, uh, presented by Jason with Half Marler and it is the final plat for Miller's Cove Edition lots one R, three R, block two. And this is where there were three lots and there was an unplatted area and it is now resolved into three, uh, lots. And the final plat is, uh, we, we checked it, it looks right. Uh, anything else for you? I don't, I don't know that there's anything else to talk about, but he has the final plats, uh, with him for to receive signature. So if this is a, it's more than informational, it's something where it's actually getting, you know, your approval.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve final plat. Call the roll.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Or any other business? I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
No, this is August the thirteenth.
Yeah. I was on vacation. Can you mic them?
You're mic though. There you go.
Do you want to try that again? Call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Knight.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
You have received the minutes of the June eleventh meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to that momentous document?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
The agenda really has nothing on it. Is there anything to be added? I'll take a motion. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.